Welcome all four of you out in the audience. Do this. To reconvene. The Employee Benefits Trust Meeting that was recessed yesterday at ten oh two. It's currently Friday, August fifteenth at. About two ten P M. And. I will turn this over to Mayor Pro Tim.
We've been on to everything. Other than item A yesterday, so do I need to read in item A again? Okay, so you don't need to read anything in. It's just a continuation of yesterday's meeting. If you want to remind the audience of four what we're. I'm pretty sure that they are very well aware of what. Yeah, they're pumped about it. So let's just pick up the discussion where we left off yesterday, which was trying to gather more information. I spoke with Ms. Raymore after our meeting and we just chatted a little bit about some. Some questions that we had and I'm hopeful that that you wouldn't mind coming up and speaking to that. I also had a chance to get to know Tara better yesterday, which is I was really grateful that we had it at one-on-one time. So thank you.
Well, hi, everyone. I'm back. So one of the primary questions was related to the premiums. So I do have that to show you today. We have the premiums for both plans, just to kind of walk through and show you what that would look like. This is assuming again that for the active employees that the city would assume. Sixty percent of the increase and forty percent for employees. The one showing right now is the pre sixty-five retirees. Kelly, I think there's an age before that one. That is the actives. Yes, this one. So this one is the actives and this was United Healthcare. So this was the recommended vendor. And it just shows basically the same information I gave you yesterday that the maximum increase. An employee would see as approximately seventy-eight dollars and that's if they're in the buy-up PPO plan.
Stop you. Kelly, is there any way we can make that bigger? Show me how to do that. What do I?
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you so much. Much better for these eyes.
So this was the. Are you right waiting? Okay. Um, the pre sixty-fives is what is shown on this next slide. And this is paid, the cost increases fully paid by the retirees whenever there's an increase. The amount that retirees receive from city contribution is two hundred dollars per month if they qualify. They qualify by having twenty-five or more years of service at the time of retirement. And if they have that, then they would receive two hundred towards the cost of their total cost of insurance. And then if you're ready for the next one, that is the lowest cost vendor. And this is the actives. And again, it's assuming the city is taking sixty percent of the increase and employees forty. That's just an assumption that we were using based on budget information. Those numbers can be adjusted. I mean, if the benefit trust says. The city only wants to take on fifty percent or forty percent. We can adjust the tables, but that's what the assumptions were when we made these. So. Under the High Plains Health Plan, which is the lowest cost vendor option. You'll see the highest cost an employee would see would be the buy-up PPO plan at twenty-five ninety-three per month. And the increase to the employer is thirty-eight eighty-nine. Under this one.
You say this was the. Screen working out as the low-cost provider?
Yes, this is the lowest-cost provider. It assumes a four percent overall increase. The recommended vendor was a twelve percent increase. And one thing I wanted to point out is when we. Set up the funding models for this, we assume a full year, not an immature year. An immature year would fund you at about nine months. But we did assume a full year. One of the reasons is there's two ways you usually do it when you're setting up self-funding and going forward every year. You don't want to just fund for what you think is going to happen. You need to have, it's either three months of IBNR, which is incurred but not reimbursed claims. Or you fund at a full year, which is essentially three extra months anyways. So we wanted to make sure we have the fund properly funded, because if you don't, you can run into issues if you get lots of claims over and above what you were estimating. So all of our numbers have assumed a fully mature year. Then the next page will just be the pre-sixty-five retiree rates. And this shows again just the what they would pay. And again, it's a hundred percent that they pick up. And then if they're here over twenty-five years. Then they would receive the two hundred per month. We currently are showing thirteen retirees. I think we might have gotten another one recently. So the number may be fourteen. Today. But that's the total number of pre-sixty-five retirees that we have in our health plans as of today. And then I have one more page and it's just the page that shows disruption. The medical disruption analysis. So there's a couple of factors that you look at here. One is the providers that are in network versus providers out of network. And what that percentage is. We talked a little bit about that, I believe, yesterday. The services in network, which is a different kind of thing that you look at. How many services were received by all the employees collectively? And were those claims in or out of network? And it compares our current network to the network information provided by the responding vendor. The visits in network is how many visits they had. So you might go to one visit at a doctor, but have three services at that appointment. So that's the difference between services and visits. Then claimants in network is employees and their dependents. So you might have one employee that goes to the doctor ten times. And maybe if they went ten times to an out-of-network doctor, that would count as ten. If they went to in-network, it would count as ten, but it's the same person. And then the overall paid in-network claims is the very bottom box. So the percentage that you look at on each of those, at the bottom of each of those factors. Tells you what percent of that factor was in-network. So if you're looking at, let's say, our incumbent is Blue Cross Blue Shield. Ninety-six percent or ninety-seven rounded of the providers were in-network. So what that tells us is about three percent of our employees we're seeing out of network providers. Or the providers that are in-network with Blue Cross today compared to what they saw for providers. That's the percent. So as you go across, you'll see those percentages. The highest percent for providers in network is the recommended vendor, which is United Healthcare. And the lowest one would have been Homestead Cigna Plan. Who with their proposal and the network information they sent us. The lowest-cost vendor is on the Butler Benefits and they're at about sixty-three percent in-network. And again, that's based on the network information they submitted during their. Proposal. So. That's pretty much the information that I've pulled for today and I'm happy to answer any questions. One thing I wanted to just make a final closing statement about was yesterday I was asked the question about if I had any concerns moving from. Fully insured to self-funded. The answer is still accurate and the same as yesterday if we were moving to the recommended vendor. Because the plan design and the plan type and all of the factors are closely mirrored to what we have today. So I don't have as much concern. The lowest-cost vendor, I just have some concern about disruption. With employees being able to see their providers and our understanding from the interviews and information we've received from that vendor is their. Pharmacy program works a little differently than what we have now. So that just takes more education for employees. And can cause a little more disruption. So I have more concern with that plan type than what I have with staying with one that's more mirrored to what we have today.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Raymore?
Which, I mean, this doesn't have. This chart doesn't have High Plains Health on there.
Butler Benefits is High Plains Health Plan. We listed the vendor who responded on this page.
So the previous slides were. That we looked at, we're comparing. Our present. Provider to Butler, is that right?
On which page?
Past several slides we looked at.
No, this is the chart. These are premiums. And this is just showing you what the premiums would be. So this is Butler Benefits, which is High Plains Health Plan. Yeah, Butler Benefits is the responder who put in the bid. And they're, the best way to say it is like a contractor and then they're contracted with. High Plains, which is a third-party administrator that processes our claims for medical. And then I have pharmacy, I'm claims provider and a stop-loss. So but they're the responder.
Yeah, okay. Question. Thank you.
Yes.
Tara, I tried not to ask you questions that I haven't already asked you, so apologies in advance. But are these percentages based on? If. I can't remember if if there were more than one that had two tiers, but I think the lowest-cost vendor had two tier of networks. Are these numbers based on both tiers or just one of the tiers?
The tier that they submitted the data for in the RFP response. And I believe for.
Okay. So do we know what it would be if you looked at both tiers?
We have, we don't have their network information for tier two. I think it's First Health, which is an Aetna wraparound. But I don't have that one. I would expect it would be higher, but I don't know the exact person. Um, I don't think so, no. Texas Health Pool is Blue Cross. Homestead is Cigna. Butler is Aetna. We had Aetna previously with Baylor Scott and White. And I'd have to go look, but I think in their wraparound that they submitted this time, it was not Aetna. I believe it was Cigna, but I'd have to go check.
For the, for the High Plains. Their second tier.
Their second tier is First Health, which is Aetna.
But these numbers. Are just based on the first tier?
Based on, yes, that's what they submitted.
Thank you.
In the response.
So because. My business has a relationship with High Plains. I reached out to Josh Butler yesterday and I know he's online today. And is it appropriate for us to ask him questions like we did the consultant yesterday? Or is that? I didn't know if that was.
That's a little unusual since it's he's one of. Multiple proposers without the others having that same option.
I understand it's not a problem.
Are they online? Are the other ones online?
I have no idea. Do you?
Other people online, but it that most people are using their initials, so I'm not sure who all. There's, there's a lot of, there's several people.
These are the people that are online. But I think it's things.
How popular we are.
Well, the consultant, no, he's not online. That's Lance. And from United Healthcare, I'm not sure if like. I don't know how they would be online. We didn't invite them or send them information.
I know, but I visited with Josh yesterday. He did talk about two tiers, a tier one and then an HSA tier. So I. I don't know much about health insurance. I just know that that what we have with them has worked well for us. Again, we're smaller and that I have a lot of confidence that they can. They can make this work if that's the way we choose. If, if, if not, that is also fine. But I just want to make sure we're getting as close to apples to apples as possible.
Yeah. And the only other question that I did have from someone was about the comparing the plan designs. They're pretty similar, so I just wanted to state that. What happens when we go out for RFP is we ask them to respond and match as close to us as possible. I know on the High Plains Health Plan, there's some minor differences in the plans, the design, like the copays, the deductibles. There are some additional pre-authorizations that might be there and and those are just some various factors that may differ. But overall, when we do an RFP, we ask them to match it. And then the other thing that everyone has to keep in mind, because we're moving to self-funded, we have the ability to change things. Right? Like, let's say one of the deductibles is too high. Well, we know if we lower it, it's going to impact your cost. But you can also raise it. So if you think it's too low and you need to have a higher deductible to kind of curb cost, you can do that. A lot is really difficult at this point to talk about because we're not self-funded yet. So you don't really know this first year how you're going to perform. So everything we're doing, even setting the rates and. Trying to estimate what the cost is going to be is very difficult when you're moving from fully insured to self-funded on a first year. You just don't know, right?
And what I think our employees would want to know is how, we know. How that's impacting them monthly. But how does it impact them when they go to the doctor? Do we know what their copays are going to be? Or when they pick up a prescription? What, what is that going to cost them? Do we?
It would be the same if we decide to keep it the same. Like if we are working with whichever vendor we pick and we say. We plan to keep everything the same as it is today. We want the same model. We don't want to change that. The biggest change comes in sometimes with like pharmacy, right? So we're going to say we're going to use the same model and maybe the model is, you know, once you hit a certain, on there, there's a. We have a fifty-dollar deductible and then you pay a percentage, especially if you're on the high deductible health plan, right? You pay a percentage. Well, if the cost of that drug is more, then that's where it's going to hit you based on the contract for that drug with that PBM. The Pharmacy Benefit Manager. Those like charges and fees, you really don't exactly know like what that might be with one vendor over the other. Unless you go to each drug and go to the vendor and say, what would this drug cost at this pharmacy? Because. Each pharmacy could have a different contract with them too. So that one is a difficult one to actually say. But what we could say to employees if it's decided. Is that based on everything we're doing, these are what your copays and your deductibles and your out-of-pockets would be. And we could model them the same as we have today. Because we're self-funded, we can do that.
I, I guess the, in your analysis, the copay we assumed was the same as what we personally had.
We assumed claims. So when you go through, you look at what did your claims cost last year, which yes, it takes into account how much the plan paid out. And then it assumes that you're going to use the same model going forward. So that's how you can estimate your claims. So and some of the vendors, like when they submitted it, they may have been estimating it on a certain program that they have like. For medications, which is one of the highest costs in a medical and health plan, right? It's the cost of drugs nowadays. Some of them will have a program like step therapy, meaning that you have to take the cheapest drug before you can get approved for the next one up, before you can get approved for the name brand. Some might not have that built into their system. So they may have assumed some of those things in their. When they, you know, quoted us. And that's normal because that's what they do on a standard. So we'll find out that information as we're going through and building it out. But our goal is to try to not have as much disruption with those. Those areas as possible for employees. Because again, it's going to be kind of a disruption anyway. Whenever you're moving to a new plan provider and new network. And I know that on. One of them, there's a couple places because of the tiers that you have to look at. You have to go and check for your doctor on more than one site. To make sure you. You know, can see if your doctor is in tier one or tier two or out of network. So that's just an education, I think. And that's where I think, where and I said I'm concerned about the transition. Like I said, I've been here seven years. We started out with one vendor and we stayed with them most of the time. And then we had a vendor change. But even staying with the same vendor, sometimes there's minor changes. And every year, there's always going to be. A process, right? When you change anything. And when we changed vendors last time, there was a little bit of, you know, the apple cart got stirred. So we're expecting that. But just when there's more variables, it just causes a little more.
You have the, the. Slide that you had yesterday with the pricing and all the different.
Yes. It's lining right after there.
One more, this one.
This shows. This shows their tier two on here.
Yes, they have a tier two.
They didn't give the information.
They didn't send us the tier-two provider network data. It's like a huge spreadsheet that they send over and then our benefits consultant runs it through. And matches it to what our current employee claims information is.
On the low-cost provider, are you, can you tell me what the? Difference would be on, I mean, pick a service, a office visit. For in-network versus out-of-network, how much? And the reason I ask that is, you know, their disruption rate was higher. You know, for me. You know, if I, if I'm seeing some specialist two or three times a year and it's out of network and it's. Thirty or forty dollars higher, I don't care. But that may not be the same for everybody. But I don't know what that differential general would generally be. Do you have that kind of information?
Have their contracts to be able to compare that. You know, you'd have to know like what doctor is it? What is the service? What is the diagnosis code? Because diagnosis codes. Drive the service level, like when you go to a regular doctor or even a specialist. What are you being seen for? So we'd have to have like. And like I said, next year, you'll be able to compare more because you'll have our data where we've used the plan versus the previous year. So you can match those things better. But you would have to have like their contract with that specific provider and then match that to.
Something that stood out with me yesterday in speaking with Mr. Butler was the cost of, of. The pharmacy fees and. And pricing. And that's what you said is always so expensive. And he did mention, I didn't see anything on here. That all generic prescriptions are at no cost. And that ninety percent of the prescriptions. Through the city of Temple are generic. So. I think anytime our. Employees go to pick up a prescription, it would be at no cost to them to be an immediate saving.
If we decided on that plan design, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? I know it's so much.
It's very confusing. I just, I. I'm not convinced we ought to spend another couple million dollars. Not go with the lowest cost here.
I mean, I agree with Mike. We typically staff brings us. The, the lowest cost. You know, vendor and, and that's what we go with. So I, I, I hate to ever override that because a lot of consideration went into the committee looking at all this information that. I don't understand. So. I don't take anything lightly. But. I, I said yesterday, I'm overwhelmed with the budget and. And I see a place to make a difference and. And I'm interested in prescribing them.
There, there are times that we have not actually used the lowest. In, in some of our decisions, but. My concern is the, the disruptions. And you know, will some of those providers still be there? I'm loving this seven days a week customer service. Because that's big. For people who have concerns. Can't reach anybody on the weekend. Or. It is overwhelming.
It's a lot of information, for sure.
I wish, I wish we had more information on the tier two. There. Because I mean, the tier. Tier two is not necessarily out of network. It's just not in the top network, right?
It's not in the lowest-cost network.
But it's still in a network.
I mean, I can try to get the information and see how fast I can get it run, see what the disruption would be on the tier two.
I hate to keep dragging this out, but I still don't.
But Mike, that's a pretty good point. I mean, I hate to drag it out too, but you raised a pretty good question in my mind.
Which is if there's more to be offered. We need more information.
Yeah, Heather just stepped out to call the consultant to see if we can get in touch and how fast they can run it.
Which consultant?
The, our benefits consultant. McGriff.
I agree. I mean, I do like the ten, the seven days a week thing would be nice. But for too many dollars. Depends on what that tier two, that tier two thing makes a lot of difference to me.
Yes, between the two. It's back on the other. Like this number that you're looking at here is what was submitted by the, the vendors and it's. The difference really is between seven point three and eight point two. So it's about a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar difference because. There's a performance share. That's why you see the number nine million and then under eight point two back on the other slide. Well, you can put the one backup we just had. First, but when you see the performance share here and it shows eight point two, that's the actual number. And it's because built into their. Stop-loss quote, they actually had it where it would cap us at the eight point two because there's a performance share. In there. They call it a performance share. So if you go over that, you don't pay that. So the difference is seven point three to eight point two. And then back to the part of the conversation yesterday, the. Pharmacy rebates being offered by Butler Benefits is about six hundred and I think seventy-nine thousand. But those can actually be lower than that. That's the estimated that we would get. And you don't get that upfront. You get that at the end of the year. And the recommended vendor, United Healthcare. And in their proposal, it's a hundred and fifteen dollars per employee per month. And you get it upfront at the beginning. And it, it won't go down unless you lose members off of the plan. It's based on per employee per month and it's guaranteed at one fifteen a month. Or per employee per month. So. That's the difference.
Can I say something while we're waiting on that? Is there a chance that you may want to? Recess again to get more information? Or will we be ready today? The only reason I'm asking is because we can only recess once on one pub-public notice. But if you think you will want to recess again, you do have that meeting that you've called on Monday. We've already missed, we would have had to. Post this item on it by two P M. But. If you think you might want to talk about this again on Monday, we could update that agenda. And you could start at three P M. on Monday to continue this discussion if you think you might want to. So just trying to keep. The time in line because Jana would need time to amend that agenda and get it posted before three. Or if we don't get it done, then by four, just your understanding how that, it just pushes us down an hour each time. So just keep that in mind.
Yeah, I'm hoping that when they come back in, I can find out how long it'll take to get that. And hopefully it's just an hour or so.
Go into your scenario. We've got twenty-five minutes.
Well, if. If you want to meet and discuss this at three P M. on Monday, then you have twenty-five minutes. If you want to meet it at four, then you have an hour and twenty-five minutes. And there you go.
Could they go ahead and post it? And if they make a decision today, then just not do it on Monday, but kind of proactively. Post it. Picking out to get the list from. The vendor and then we'll run that and see.
I think we're going to go ahead and post it just in case. Could be Mondays.
Do we think we'll know a time here in a few minutes or?
He's calling him now, so I'm hoping that she'll get back with us within a few minutes. I don't know if you can. Take a break for a few minutes and we can get that information and then let you know how long it'll be, if that's possible.
It takes me my heaven in a little bit then.
Yeah, you would love it because.
That's, that's completely fine. So then we'll take a recess for about fifteen minutes and reconvene at. Three o'clock?
Yep, sounds great.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
We convene at three o'clock and continue our discussion on item A. And Ms. Raymore had some extra information for us.
Yes, I have an update on the disruption report for the tier two first health. So we did reach out actually yesterday it was sent, but because it's a rented network, they have to go to first health to get the information and they don't know how many days that will take. So it could take some time. So I'm not sure that Monday. You know, if you schedule it for Monday, we may not have it. I'm not sure of the timing on it. They just said it could take several days before they get it because they have to get it back from first health.
Okay.
Um, another thing I just wanted to point out was the difference in cost actually based on the premiums that are proposed is $635,000. So it's not $2 million. Um, it's 952,00802. If you look down the total rates for the actives here and remember the retirees, they pay the full amount minus the 200. So that 200 that's in the budget per retiree per month, that amount is doesn't change unless you get extra retirees in there. But it's not impacted by um, how much the extra is based on the premiums. And then if we look over at the um, proposed for the lowest cost vendor, it's 317,000 dollar increase. So about 635 is the total um, increase above our current budget that is proposed um, difference between the two.
So the difference between the what y'all did recommended and the low cost, you're saying is 600 and some odd thousand?
Six hundred thirty five thousand dollars per fiscal year. Yes.
We know that a cent is eight eighty one, so a little less than.
Say three quarters of a cent.
And that is all funds. So the the cent is just general fund employees and I'm not sure what the ratio is. Between general fund and one or two fund on the other funds. So it wouldn't just impact that 635,000 is not just a general fund.
Yeah, that's yeah, across all things, the hotel motel, the water. Yeah.
Of course, the majority of employees are in the general fund. I'm not exactly sure what the percentage.
No, but thank you for clarification.
So I think another um, clarification that we had was Zoe uh, said that she was concerned about the lowest. Tier not having service uh, seven days a week and it was just uh, we thought it was five and um, I believe it is seven. There is a concierge service Monday through Friday and then there is a weekend service as well. So it would be seven days a week. And that concerned me as well because um, we work, you know, seven to five, right? And uh, it's it's the weekends when we get a chance to sit down and make those phone calls or you know, inevitably we need somebody. So.
There is service on the weekend. It's just not the concierge level.
Mike, what's going on in your head?
Oh, maybe, I don't, maybe Mark will teach that. I think I know enough to know that I don't know enough.
Counsel, did you understand the um, the cost difference calculation?
Not completely, no.
I, because I didn't. So I'll be, I'll admit it, I guess. Can you go through that one more time?
Yes. So what's proposed in the premiums and in the budget? If we went with um, the recommended vendor, it's 952,0802, which you'll see right down at the bottom where it says the plus minus from current. Next to that, if you look at the 634,000, that's this number. This is the employer share. This is the employee share. I was giving you the difference between the total costing since. I mean, employees and um, employer, if you're looking at employer only, you would take the 634,000. And then Kelly, if you can go to the two slides down, two pages down. When we get to the lowest cost vendor, if you look here at the 211,585, that's employer. 106 is employee and 317 is total. So the total cost difference, not the amount that the city would pay, but the total cost difference is that 635,000 dollars. Um, I can do some quick math and tell you 211, we'll go back up to the other page real quick. 211 minus 634, that's the actual difference in the um, cities. So that's 400. And about $23,000 is the cost difference between the lowest cost plan and the recommended plan that the employer would be paying. So.
But how does, how does that affect employees?
Well, the employees increase is 318,000 total on there and on the other one, it's 106. So it's about 212,000 dollars annual total for all employees. Difference between lowest cost and highest cost. And if we look at just like.
Pay more?
It's still split 640. And so do we take the total cost and we split that 60% city, 40% employee? So an employee, let's just look at like, if you have the highest cost plan, you have your family covered and you're on a PPO. That's the buy up. On the lowest cost plan, the employee would have a $26 per month increase. On the um, recommended plan, it would be $77, so about $50 difference per month. Um, first for the recommended plan versus the uh, lowest cost.
Players will pay $50 more a month for the recommended plan than for the lower plan.
Yes, that's correct.
So it's not all the city savings. It's also employee savings.
Yes, that's the difference. So about 400,000 on the employees on the employer side and 200. Some thousand difference on the employee side. Split among all the employees in those tier groups, but you have to remember the $50 um, that I just gave you the example is the worst case. We only have 49 employees in that plan as of now. Um, if you look at the tiers with the highest number of. And that cost would um, go to 3229 a month extra. Um, versus if we did the lowest cost plan, um, Kelly, the two more slides down. That would be 1076, so about a $29 a month difference between the lowest costs and the recommended plan. Uh, based on the monthly premiums for employee only, which again is our largest um, single group tier that we have.
That is monthly or paycheck?
That is monthly. It's over here.
And do the city employees get paid every other week or?
They get paid biweekly.
As the British would say fortnightly. Which is much more precise than biweekly because biweekly could mean twice a week or every other week. So. I'm on a mission to try to get fortnightly introduced into the English, the American lexicon, but I don't think I'm going to be successful.
I think it's a good idea. That it's worth a shot.
That's right.
Tara, how are these um, rates? How are these rates determined? Is this something that the vendor provides or do we like? How do you decide what um, the cost of each um? The high deductible and the PPO is going to be and and how uh, the the different rates amongst the, I guess, the the types like employee only, employee spouse. Um, and and then I I think uh, also if you could address the employer contribution, because I think that's tiered a little bit, if I remember correctly.
Well, the employer contribution on some plans like the high deductible health plan, um, the employee pays nothing. So the employer is paying a higher percentage of that one. Um, you'll see the employer percentage in um. Let's see if we go back to two pages back, for example, on this one. You'll see employer percent. That just tells you the percent um, that what happens is we looked at what is needed to fund the plan. And then again, we wanted to fund it maturely. So we didn't want to fund it for just the nine months. We wanted to fund it for its full 12 months, what the estimated claims are. Then when we get over here, so we know what the number is and then we know we're going to take that number and we're going to split it 6040. And then we took the employees premiums for each tier and we increased those premiums. So that um, they would be kind of in line with the percentages that they have been and try to keep them as close as possible to that with the 40% on the employee and a 60% on the city.
But these are not from the vendor. These are from the, we just, we decide.
Our consultant puts it together. We tell them um, what we want because based on budget is we were told that it's going to be like a 6040. And um, take what we are estimating the cost to be and give us a um, proposed um, premium charts. And that's how we get them and they come back over to us. Um, and again, that's something we can change. So for example, if you decided you wanted to not pay 60%, we want to split it 5050 with the employees to save a little bit for the city's budget. You can do that. Um, you could flip it and say, we want the employees to pay 60% and we're going to pay 40% from the city. You can do that. Those things are all adjustable based on how you want to do that.
And the overall cost that you've calculated is based on a fixed cost plus what number?
It's the fixed cost plus the number that each vendor supplied to us that they estimated in their stop loss quote. That would be our um, it's kind of, it's your aggregate, like the cap of what they think that you would hit before you can file an aggregate claim, meaning. All your claims below the specific uh, 200,000, when they hit that aggregate level, then you get um, the maximum is a $1 million reimbursement. But you would get that, but they have to provide a number when they're doing the um, quote for stop loss. So that was the number that was actually added in to the overall.
And can you remind me what that was for each of these?
Seven point three and eight point two million were the totals that were included. I mean, that included every.
And what, one more time, can you explain the um? The difference between the nine million and the eight point two on Blue Cross?
It is a um, performance basically share that we have. Um, and it's with you, you mean United Healthcare?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Yeah, um, it's called a performance share. So we would not pay more than the eight point two. Nine million is what they had in the stop loss, but with the performance share, that's what our cap would be at eight point two for our claims, not at nine. Because the performance share, they're taking on some of that uh, liability. So the eight point two to the nine is a liability they're taking as part of that quote.
So we would, we would play pay claims under that scenario, we would pay claims up to eight point two.
Mm hmm.
And then they would pay claims between eight point two and nine and then the stop loss. From nine to 10 and then anything over 10 would be back on us.
Yes.
If in the unlikely and hopefully would never happen event that that occurred.
Yeah, it would be very rare for that to happen because you have your specific stop loss and everything else in place. So it would be rare for that to happen.
Has that ever happened? Have we ever had to dip into a stop, stop loss?
We aren't fully, we're not self insured. We're fully insured. So we don't have stop loss currently. I've never worked anywhere where we've hit that. I used to work for Williamson County and we had almost 3000 employees and we never hit our aggregate. Um, we would hit stop loss specifically because you know, one preemie baby would, you know, hit that, but um, we've never hit the aggregate limits. In my years of doing this anyway.
We were self insured for a couple of years previously and we didn't have that. I mean, I don't think we ever hit aggregate.
No, we had individual stop loss that we hit.
Do either of these have rebates if we are lower?
They all have rebates built in. It's just how they're giving them. The recommended vendors giving us $115 per employee per month. Um, that we just how many ever covered employees we have, we do that times 115 and we get that off of our bill every month. Um, so that really pays for like the administrations. Our administration is actually a credit. We're not actually paying that because. That's how that's set up and it's a guaranteed 115 per employee per month. The other um, secondary vendor is um, estimating the uh, rebates for the year. And you usually will get those after each quarter ends um, sometime later in the future. And that is a lump sum for after each quarter. Um, usually with timing, it takes anywhere from. 120 to 180 days, depending on the vendor and how fast they're processing those. And it's dependent on the um, pharmacy rebates received and that's by usually um, prescription um, tier and contracts with the PBM. So that can vary.
Well, we don't have any idea what that might be.
That's estimated at 679, 679,000 dollars and the one that's 115 per employee per month. Heather, do you have that number?
These numbers already in the amounts that you're showing?
Yep, all of that has already been included. And when you saw the slide that showed the 7.3 million and the um, eight point two million, that slide, those numbers are built into that. And any additional um, credits that they give you because um, for example, one of the vendors um, was giving us a $10,000 credit. It was a one year guarantee on the admin fees for the rate guarantee. And then the other vendor was giving us um, 150,000 for the first year and 50,000 for year two and year three. We only built in the year one credits into the number, um, but the recommended vendor does have another 100,050 for year two and 50 for year three. Those are implementation and admin credits that are applied towards your monthly amounts that you're paying.
You guys have any more questions, Ms. Raymore? Any more discussion that we need to have? Well, if there are no more questions for Ms. Raymore, then um, I will accept a motion. This is on, only on item A. Um, again, so there's no, no more discussion? Is everyone comfortable with moving toward a motion?
Oh. I don't know that we're going to get more information. And.
Well, then let's make the best.
The time that we would need it.
Decision with the information we have.
I'll go ahead and make a motion on item A that we go with Butler, the low cost provider.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have my stuff up to make.
Press switch back to your. Few minutes or not minutes, but a few seconds.
Then you have to hit that up the top left just.
And then now.
Now the other top left, right, the other.
I gave Carl the hard time at the first meeting.
Come on, pro.
There you go. Thank you. I appreciate it. So we have a motion by benefits trust member Kirkendall and a second by benefits trust member Pilkington, if you would. We have four votes yes, one, zero votes now and one abstention. The motion moves forward with the low cost vendor. Thank you. So I will. End this meeting, this never ending meeting. And thank you guys for your, for your time, for your attention, for the details, for the consultants, for the committee. It, it, it took so much to get us here and that bit goes unnoticed and we appreciate all your time and council members. Thank you for your time. I know it took an extra day. So thank you. We are dismissed.